Good, good, good. I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present. This is a, sorry. There we go. Where was I? The quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called. Notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government. Five, five, one. I'm going to open us tonight in prayer. Please pray with me. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather again. Father, we thank you for the blessings that you have provided with such grace and mercy and bounty to us and Prosper, Prosper ISD. We're grateful for the students that you've given us, that are students that are under our care. We're grateful for the families they represent. Father, all the citizens of this area, Lord, we're just grateful for the blessings that you've given us in our life. And Father, I pray that you would give us wisdom and discernment as we discuss matters tonight about governance for this district. I pray that you would keep our words kind, Father, keep our thoughts focused and effective on the business that we have today, and just guide everything that we said from up here and that we think and discuss, and the way that you would have us to operate this district in the best interest of our kids. Pray all these things in your son's name. Amen. Join the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'd like to invite Amanda here up in front of everyone. We'd like to honor you. We'd like to honor you at this very special award. So for those of you who may not know, Amanda was named the Texas Journalist of the Year, which is an enormous honor. And so in December, no, spring break, March. So spring break, poor Amanda was in pajamas, and she had no idea that we were coming to her class, and we came and said, surprise, with her mom and dad, and she was like, I'm in pajamas. Exactly. We're just wearing those to school. I appreciate you clearing that out. But we wanted to make sure that we honored you, because this is such an enormous award, and she will have a banner that will be hanging at Prosper High School. So this is one of the highest honors that you can receive. And fortunately, not only is it Amanda B. Grant Johnson, last year at Rock Hill High School, was also nominated the Texas Journalist of the Year. So now someone, it's going to have to be the third year in a row, but it probably sweats off you because you got it. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. Here, I know you probably were not expecting that, but what we fully understand that without the support of the loving, fabulous family behind every single one of our students, they don't achieve what they have achieved. So thank both you and your husband, because he was there for the job.
He's here somewhere.
Oh, wait, where?
Oh, we should have had him, too.
Oh, well, don't try to. Mr. Here is no getting out of this. I know we didn't have a reserved seat for you.
Oh, my gosh.
Am I identity now? No, I'm kidding.
That's good. It's a duo.
Are you ready? Okay, awesome. No, I'm not going to. We're also very excited tonight to have Miss Diamond Mitchell with us. Diamond, will you come forward? So Diamond has received one of the highest honors also, and she has received the Stamped Scholarship, which is four years paid full. Your mom and dad say thanks. In a really big way. And she has worked extremely hard. Diamond, I think I may have frightened you a little bit, because I went into Rock Hill and I checked in at the front office, and I said, hey, schedule, where is Diamond? And so I had to go up the stairs and down the hallway, and I was like, Diamond? She's like, yes. And so got to honor her personally, but we wanted to make sure that we had this moment for her tonight. So Diamond Mitchell is headed to Ole Miss. We are so very proud of you, but we know that this doesn't happen by chance, so come on up. A lot of love and support, and no, you can't have a crime out of it. All right. We'll do family photo, and I'll use it for holiday fun. And next up, it is crazy, there is already graduation time, and I would like to ask Dr. Burdette to come up, who is the principal at Prosper High School. And we have two new gentlemen, and I'd like to invite Thomas Traunman, and Reed Smith, please come forward. And this is another great example, a lot of hard work and a lot of commitment to academics. And so I want to make sure, Thomas, that you are honored and awarded as the valedictorian at Prosper High School for the class of 2022, and Reed as the salutatorian for the class of 2022 at Prosper High School. Congratulations. One on each side?
Sure.
I mean, maybe look smarter. Right now, I want family. Yes. So we'll do Thomas, and then we'll have Reed slide over.
Hi, Glenn. Glenn.
Thank you.
Good. I'm so happy.
I'd like to ask Mr. Toth, principal of Rock Hill High School, to come forward, as well as Kate Carline and Emily Warren, the staff. They got a minute, because that's okay, and I like waiting for girls to come up. Outstanding. So Kate Carline is our valedictorian at Rock Hill High School this year, and Emily Warren is our salutatorian. We're very proud of both these young ladies, and we want to make sure that we invite your families to come up and join us. Because again, I know, why don't you, yes, do you want Mr. Toth in there?
Sure.
Why don't you get in the middle, and we'll be on the side.
There we go.
I expect these awards to be on the mantle. That's all we need. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. Ton of hard work, dedication, really, going above and beyond in all areas, and what an amazing moment for us to be able to celebrate the great work that so many of our outstanding students in Prosper ISD have been able to do. I know that you all and your families would probably love to stay for a riveting meeting that is school board business, but if you feel like that maybe this might be a good time to make your exit, please feel free. You have our permission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats.
One of the requirements of the Texas Association of School Boards is that we publicly make the public aware through a board agenda that our board members have met all requirements of required trainings. Our board members put in countless hours in training, and I know that that's not always seen on the outside, but certainly behind the scenes, either attending training at Region 10, training that's here within the district, and then many online classes, too, to be able to meet those requirements. And I'm proud to say that all seven board members have met their requirements. So thank you all for your countless hours and effort to make sure that we were in good standing and serving our students, our staff, and our community at a high level.
Absolutely. Thank you for this beautiful slide. We've never had a slide before either. Very nice.
All these updates.
Very nice. All right.
So our enrollment, I guess I'm going to let the secret out. We're still growing. So you can see last month at 22,646, and now April, and obviously that number has changed because that was pulled when your board packet came, and at 22,673, soon to be at 23,000.
Wow. Okay.
Okay, and our construction update for Joyce Hall Elementary as well as Walnut Grove High School. So we are on schedule with both of those projects, and I don't know if you've driven down First Street or any of our attendees, but you can very clearly see the construction of Walnut Grove High School. And Joyce Hall, obviously, if you go over into the Star Trail community, it is well underway and already has Ms. Hall's name on the side of it. So exciting times.
Very good.
Beautiful. The news is, we don't have a rock playground. Walnut Grove High School, if you'll go ahead and play that video so we can see the progress on Walnut Grove. It's so nice to be able to go on a little tour to see, and I appreciate that he put the county bird in the picture, the crane.
There you go.
Got it?
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you. Keep it up.
Yes, thanks. So I want to give an update to all of you from the Prosper Promise. That was our initiative, and I love that you as a board, that that was one of your goals, is how to reengage the community at a higher level and really be able to give them that full experience of Prosper ISD. I want to also thank the Prosper ISD team and our various leaders who stepped up willingly and gladly to be able to really connect with our community at a different level than we've ever done before, but truly born out of your vision as a board on how to better serve our ever-growing community. So you can see the advisory committees and any of our parent ambassadors, so meetings and events, 46, 485 participants, that equals 62, around 62 hours. Informational events, 156 meetings at events, participants as far as coming to get more information about the district, whether that was special education or any of the other various activities that we had, 1,929 participants. The hours, over 140 hours. Community events, 13 community events, 6,000 participants, and that's a rough number because we're usually not clocking the numbers as people are coming in the stadium in different events like that. The hours, 34 and a half hours. So 215 meetings and events, 236 hours of community engagement with an estimated number of 8,414 participants. So absolutely outstanding work. Thank you again for your vision and really being able to allow us to make this come into fruition in our district. I think we'll see increased numbers with this initiative as we move forward, because I think as we've grown and as we've gotten to be a larger district, and this is now becoming a talking point, and so I think that we'll see more and more people who want to engage and get into these different activities that we have, whether it's informational or advisory. Want to talk to you, though, about what do the next steps look like? Because what we don't want, as we're closing out all of these different community events, we then find ourselves in this moment in time in the last couple of months of school, and then as we make our way into the summer, how will we continue to commit? Because the Prosper Promise will get started again in August, so those applications and the way in which you can access these community events. So that would leave us with a span of time. And we know that the growth is pretty immense, too, during the summer, so we want to make sure that we're engaging those new families, too, to make them aware. So what we're recommending is a community roundtable for our board members to be present. We'll hold it here in the PISD boardroom, and so what we're going to do is offer a morning time on April 25th at 8:30 to 9:30. You can see the next event is May 23rd, so during that lunch hour for anyone that would like to come and engage with us. And then the final one on that June 13th, and that will take us into an evening event. So we wanted to give a nice kind of smattering of the different times, because we know we have working families and different constraints that come into play, and certainly with the June, knowing that the kids will be home at that point. So we wanted to make sure that they were able to be able to be here and give those dates in advance. And then you can see the Prosper Promise applications to be back out and about in August of 2022 as we make our return to school, so we can form those groups. Any questions about that?
I have a couple. With the community roundtables, can you talk a little bit about what that looks like? I know there are times when I'm kind of talking with parents. One of the issues, quite honestly, is when we're here at school board meetings, we can't talk back and forth and engage. Is that likened to what we will see or what we're proposing for these community roundtables? Or what does, what does this really look like?
So we won't be sitting up here, because that creates that barrier between us and the community, so we would have tables set up in here where maybe you and me may be sitting on a table, and then families could come over. What we'll do as we begin the event is we'll make it clear that Dr. Ferguson and Mr. Will Born are going to talk about growth. And what we'll do is we'll go out and get actually ideas of what parents are wanting to hear about, because what we don't want to do is that we provide this opportunity, but then we're not talking about the things that the community actually wanted to hear more about. So what we'll do is make sure that we have probably the, more of the leader that is over that area, and so they would be sitting with Ms. Dixon or Mr. Cavender or one of the board members to be able to kind of walk through that. But yes, to answer your question, to be able to engage, because we know that this is extremely difficult for our community at times, and I know it is for each of you, too, to not be able to engage and have a conversation. So it will be posted as a regular meeting, because we would all be together as the quorum piece of it, so we would post that out, but it will just be a different format and a different setup, is what we'll be looking at, where we have more ability to be able to engage with the community. Okay? Any other questions?
First of all, Dr. Ferguson, thank you so much for you and your team putting this together this past year. I think that it's been an awesome thing for our community, so thank you all for all the hours that y'all put into it. What did you like best about it this year, and what do you think are some tweaks that you might want to make for this next year?
Well, I guess before I jump into that, it's an excellent question. I want to give a ton of credit and a huge shout out to Rebecca Strong, who is our community engagement specialist, because none of this, literally, none of this would have happened. And she went along this crazy journey with me of, we need to get this scheduled, and this needs to be organized, and I need you to do this, and she was there going right and left and backwards and forwards and really making that happen. So thank you, Mrs. Strong, invaluable resource to our district. So what I would do differently, one of the things that, as I reflect over the year, is that we've had some, a missed opportunity with our staff. And so that one is a little bit challenging, because what I would see is that our staff, many of them signed up for these activities, but then there is the weight and the wearing of the day on them. And so then they would sit in meetings, and sometimes I feel like they were trying to be really careful what they said or did, because they, they're like, I'm a professional, I'm an employee in the district, I don't want to speak right now. But they need to have a platform where they can actually speak openly. And I think supper with the superintendent has given them a little bit of that, but what I'd like to see, if our subpool kind of rises up, is that there would be like a teacher advisory group, and then each quarter I would spend a day with that selected group, touring them, letting them see all of the different amazing resources that we have in our district, and really being able to hear what their questions, concerns are, obviously feed them a very nice lunch, but not give them that additional after-school moment. And then it's with their own kind, so then that way we really get down to the root of what is a teacher experiencing and what are really the heartache things that they're up against. So I would love to see that added in. One of the things, too, with my student superintendent advisory group, I would like to add in our middle school kids, too, and maybe some of our elementary kids, trying to figure out kind of what does that look like? Because it's great having that high school perspective, and they will definitely give you their opinion, but I think there are some things, definitely give you their opinion. They're very respectful, but I'd love to hear from some of our middle school and elementary kids to really kind of broaden that scope, too, so that we have that voice in the room. One of the things that we're in the process of, obviously analyzing the data, seeing what worked, what didn't, because some of them, if it was low attendance, or we saw that the same three parents always showed up, and we're offering it every month, I do have to balance what is the pool on our own staff, if they're there every single month, but they're presenting the same group every single time. So we've, we're analyzing and kind of slugging through that data to really figure out, because we want this to be powerful, we want it to be impactful. And a big piece of it, too, was that when we started this journey, once you all said, hey, this is a goal, this is a part of our vision of what we're wanting to do, is that it couldn't just be a meeting and then we're done. It was about creating that long-term relationship through an entire year. So that's why you would see the superintendent parent advisory didn't change. It was the same group over and over, or Dr. Bradley's Prosper University. It was a locked group. So that's one of the things, and I've got to kind of keep balance, too, with our own leaders. We have a ton of night activities that are happening with our students, and sometimes I would find myself a little bit in this moment of, I should be with kids, but I'm here. And so I think we've got to kind of figure out what is that and where is that balance? So we're analyzing and looking at all of those strengths of it, because it definitely has informed our community at a much higher level, but then also kind of where are those constraints that we need to think about and how do we adjust accordingly?
Awesome. Good question.
I just have one more. I'm sorry. As I wrap my mind around the, this slide that we're looking at now with the community roundtable, just so I'm clear, this is for anyone, right? This is not just for those who have been a part of the committees.
Absolutely. So we want anyone, and even if they didn't submit a question or something that they wanted to learn more about, come on in. The greatest thing that could happen is that we need a larger setting.
Okay.
Right? And that we have that opportunity to really have a conversation and connect in between the seven of you, right along with our leaders. That's a lot of people that can sit down and really get some face time in a small group, which is what we're wanting to achieve from it.
Sounds good. That's fabulous. Very good. Any comments on that? Okay.
Great idea. Okay, so you had the Prosper ISD Fine Arts Report. I know that that was posted also on the website. It's very lengthy, very involved. One of the things that we've gotten feedback, we need to add cheer into that data, so we'll certainly make that adjustment for next year, and Mr. Alström will make those adjustments within that Fine Arts program, because cheer does fall under Fine Arts. Any questions about any of the information?
Yeah, we didn't have any. We had some, we've had 10 signups for open forum, but none of them were agenda-related items, so as you'll notice in your agenda, we will put those comments on at item number 15. So we will move into consent agenda.
So we have the minutes from the prior meeting. The other item that's on consent agenda is asking for the action to conclude the virtual academy. And I gave you the numbers by grade level of kind of where we are. I think we're about 170 students total across the district, so.
Okay.
So that'll be, those students will return come August.
Yes, or they could make the option to do a virtual school if their parents want to continue that. It just wouldn't be offered in Prosper ISD.
Right.
Got it.
And at this point, would they return to their home campus essentially?
Yes, 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 they would.
Okay, I need a motion on the consent agenda unless there's any other questions.
I make a motion.
Deb, Bill's second. All in favor? Perfect.
So this is the TEAC certification. This is a yearly requirement of what we need to do. There's a system that's called EMAT, because you know educators, we love acronyms, and so the EMAT system is actually our approval system in order for us to be able to even place an order. So I have to complete a form once we've gained approval, so that then our personnel can get in and start making orders, and that's for our existing adoptions. With our growth, you can probably see that we have to get additional books here, and we need them with all the shipping issues. So if I need more AP Psych books, then we can get them, but it's things that have already been adopted previously before this moment. This is just approval to get into the system and place those orders.
Any questions about that? If not, I'll entertain a motion for item number 13A.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Thank you, Jenna. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? There we go.
Okay, next up is our approval on a foreign exchange student's waiver. We certainly love having all of our students that come from other countries, and we've been very fortunate and very blessed to literally get them from all over the world. But with our growing campuses, what we're asking for with this waiver is that there would be a limit of five and is that there would be a limit of five and no more than five at each of the high schools. So, and it, it has nothing to do other than with growth. Because it's just more, it's seats.
Okay.
And how many do we have currently?
Oh gosh, I knew you were going to ask me that. It's more than five, I can tell you that.
I know, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
Nine.
Nine is the number we heard?
Nine at PHS.
At PHS, okay.
And I know we've got several at Rock Hill too. I don't know if Mr. Tovey still lives.
Eleven, okay, wow, all right. Okay, any comments or questions on 13B? If not, I'll entertain a motion for 13B.
Just for clarity, this will be for the upcoming school year?
Yes, and then as our numbers and hopefully with the opening of Walnut Grove High School, right, then we can go back to five or more, which is the way that the waiver is written. So hopefully this is just a period in time. But yes, it's for one year and then we'll have to bring this back for approval.
Okay, motion?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you, Deb, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly, all in favor? School calendar.
Yeah, so we, we know we brought you the 22, 23, and 23, 24 school calendar. But then what we found is that we needed to make a few adjustments to that. One of those specifically was the 23, 24 challenges or changes. Collin College, we followed their calendar. And one of the things that our local superintendents who use Collin, and I was one of them, asked for the alignment of spring break to be with the other colleges that predominantly go during kind of the second week in March. Because what we were finding is there's this constraint on our families because we're one week offset from them. But they need to be able, or want to be able to take a family trip. And so trying to accommodate that, Collin couldn't accommodate that on the 22, 23 school year, but they were able to make that change for the 23rd, or 23, 24. And then based on just the weather that we've gotten this past year, and I know we were able to use instructional minutes kind of those first two days. But even with the 10 o'clock start, we were kind of scraping because it's minutes. And so it was like, okay, we're all the way up to the line, but we had missed two hours of instructional minutes with the 10 o'clock start. So we really took it to the limit. So this would give us more flexibility with these changes. So it actually added student instructional, one student instructional day in so that we've got a little bit more time. And really the constraint came more so with elementary. That's the one that we're the tightest on instructional minutes. It's not as tight on middle school and high school, but we actually need a few more minutes at middle school and high school because our kids get on buses to go travel for band and cheer and track and all of the different things. And they're missing instructional time, so that gives us a little bit more. You'll also see that we've got an adjustment, I hope that this goes over well. Because I remember when we moved the elementary time to 7:45 and it was, it was challenging. So what we're trying to do is just get a few more minutes. It's five minutes basically, so 7:42 start instead of a 7:45 start and then a 2:52 release versus a 2:50 release is what we're looking at. And then your middle school and high school will stay the same. Obviously buses drive that with transportation because we're running multiple tiers, trying to get an elementary route, then off to a middle school route or a high school route. So we want to make sure that we've buffered enough time for our drivers along with the traffic challenges that we face in Prosper to give them enough time to get where they need to with our kiddos. But also trying not to make it too painful on the start time.
Got it.
Okay, so we do need action on this one unless you have questions.
Questions, I think we all, all have had time to look at this. Thoughts or questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Please, make a motion, we got a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Deana, all in favor? All right, that motion passes.
Dr. Ferguson, just for clarity, this calendar that's, and it has been posted publicly, this will be the new calendar, right? So parents can go ahead and take a look at it.
Yes, and that was part of the reason that we wanted to get this to y'all now because many of our parents are planning and scheduling things and we want to make sure that we had these changes out to them. And that's one of the advantages of the two-year calendar also. So if you are booking a trip for spring break, you know, hey, we can go. And this is the week for all of us.
Perfect.
Great. Okay.
Okay, so now we'll have Dr. Penn. Presentation report.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight we have our financial presentation of the fiscal year through March 31st of '22. Starting off on our portfolio, we'll run through the, the highlights with a little under 154 million in our bond funds. These will continue to be used as we're making the payments on construction. The Finance Committee has met with Dr. Ferguson and I already this past month. And we'll, again, this coming month, the financial advisors and start looking for when that next bond sale will happen to keep funding the projects and keep that moving forward. We'll be bringing that recommendation in the coming months. The general fund is at 180 million or so. And that represents fund balance and then current, current funds from this year. One just note that I'll point out again in a moment. We're what's called Payment Class II, so we don't receive payments from the state from December to March. And most of the tax revenue has already come in at that time. So March is not really a very high revenue month. And then as the months go forward, we'll see more of our state payments come in. So I'll show that again in a minute, but just if you're happening compared to last month is a highlight. Bringing our total portfolio to 381 million. On the general fund, so this represents all the 100 funds that we have, everything that's broken out. Most of our tax collections are in, so that's this year's levy. Any prior and delinquent taxes are all coming in. And then you'll notice, and that's mostly in, but if we look on that third line down, that the state payment, that's at about 58, 59%, we'll see that increase every month from here on out through the rest of the year up till it's completed.
So I have a question, Dr. Penn.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know, I pay a tax bill for the ISD and it's a pretty good-sized chunk of money. And so just curiosity, when a taxpayer in Prosper ISD writes that check, sends it off, how much of that money, just percentage, like a ballpark, is staying actually in Prosper ISD? And then how much is headed down to Austin?
So one of the things with our property value, all it does is reduce the state portion. So we don't really, a lot of people think with our property growth that we're gaining a lot more. But really it just reduces that state portion. You can tell on our, on our budget that well over half of our funds come from our tax, our tax base here in Prosper. It just, it helps the state out at this point.
I'm glad we're helping.
Yes.
We're helpers.
They are too.
We're helpers here. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the state side will continue to, to pick up as, as the year goes on. We've definitely.
I'm sorry, just for, so to Dr. Ferguson's question. So every time our local property taxes increase, the state reduces the amount that's allocated for the district.
The, the tax rate actually, based on what is adopted here, is going down.
Sure.
The property value is going up, so it's increasing the total dollar amount.
Right.
And when you, I'm going to try to not get too political here, but you're, but the.
Pushing you there.
You are, you are, and I'm trying to, how to answer. But the more that's paid from our taxpayers is less that the state has to kick in. So communities that do not have a large tax base, they're primarily funded from the state.
Got you.
And then we've had years where if we raise more than a certain threshold, that's where you'll hear recapture or Robin Hood or they've got a new term for it now. If I wasn't on the spot right now, I'd have it for you, but it's, it's much fancier, it's like three words. But, but just, we, just raising above and beyond, then you send into the state and then they disperse that to other, other districts.
Got you.
To help with it. One, one side note on that, we, and we have, I believe, paid that in the past prior to tax compression. That shows up as a district expense as opposed to a reduction in revenue. And that may not sound like a lot to you right now, but then you get to where you're adopting a budget line, showing you're spending money, which is really never yours to begin with. It, it comes in and then we pay it back out, so. And it does hurt on some various measures that are out there on your expenses. Thank you for that.
And we're at $1.46 going through another compression on our tax rate.
We'll likely have compression again this year. Yes, not likely we will.
Because I know sometimes the conversation is Prosper has the highest taxes. No, we have the highest property value.
Right. It's, it's not our, it's not our, our rate is actually, our rate is actually not as high as we could go on the rate. Even, even with compression, there are.
I don't know why we, the state uses the word compression, we're lowering the tax rate.
I think it's tricks.
Compression.
Yeah, compression.
Sorry to interrupt your wonderful presentation.
Right, sorry, Dr. Ferguson.
I love it, I love it, okay. All right. One note on that state budgeted number. So we've just found out recently, you know, we are funded off of attendance and not enrollment. And so one of the issues that districts like us and all across the state have struggled with on an attendance-based funding system is that when you have a pandemic that encourages you to stay home for 10 days, when you get sick and things like that, that has hurt our attendance. And so the TA has come out just recently with Hold Harmless of sorts, but it's called the Target Percentage Attendance Rate. And it is giving you kind of what they think you should be at. And for us, that will be 96.3%. Just for some reference, our first three, six weeks were between about 94.5% and 95.5%. And our fourth, six weeks was 91%, a little bit above. And so that will help us in, in what will be our, our final budgeted number. And so I would, I'm working with our, our PMS department led by Ms. Doyle, who helps provide data and it's a very collaborative relationship that we'll be able to pull our data and project kind of where we will, where we'll end up. And so I will bring a revenue adjustment to you in likely June that would show kind of where our budgeted revenue will end. And the state will fund us on that as, as it goes. All right. So 83% of our revenue to date, about 60% of payroll to date spent, which is keeping our, our overall budget at about 58% spent to date. And that also represented there in the graphs, just to, just to highlight the amount of our budget that does go to paying employees' salaries and, and for people. The athletic fund, again, representing money that is brought in through athletic events and then expensed to pay the, the workers and officials and the cost to put on the event. So 715,000 in revenue to date. I did want to highlight, just, there is a little, you notice a state program money there, about 8,000. What that is, is what's called TRS on behalf. I know you've heard about that before in budget workshops. But because we are paying gate workers through the payroll system, there's a portion that the state gives towards retirement. We don't actually ever see that money, but we do, are required to record it as revenue. So just in case you're up and wondering why state revenues on our athletic events there. And then 361, expense to date with a budget surplus of 353 from our 164 fund to date. Food service, food service is tracking well. And we always talk about that one wanting to basically break even. We're not, we want to, we want it to pay for itself, but not going above and beyond, just pay for the staff and the food and some equipment. And it's absolutely doing that this year with 5.9 million in to date, 5.8 spent with a surplus right now of 78,000 to date. Our debt service, so these are the taxes that pay for our bond fund. This is the money that comes in from our taxes and then goes back towards paying for the bond. So it's 64 million revenue to date. Again, just to point out a little bit of state money there. That's what's tied to, for an acronym for you, the ASAHE, Additional Home, Home, Additional State Aid Homestead Exemption. What that is, is based when the last time the homestead exemption was increased. It's kind of a little bit of Hold Harmless in the INS. But beyond that small portion, everything is from our tax base. And then the remaining, remainder of the 40, or we've spent 40 million to date and 23 million point seven is left. That will be in the August debt service payment. So that will be expended in August. The ongoing construction projects, Joyce, Joyce Hall Elementary, number 15, 21% remaining in that, getting ready to open up this coming school year. We'll just continue to see that as it gets closer and closer to completion. And then with 19 cumulative to date, 19.8 and 5.3 still remaining. And then High School 3, Walnut Grove, with 68 million spent cumulative and 132 still outstanding on that project. If there are not any questions, that would conclude this month's presentation of the financials, but I welcome any questions.
Any more questions for Dr. Penn?
Okay.
Wonderful job as always, thank you. We do need a motion to approve the Financial Investment Tax Report.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Drew, second? All in favor? Wonderful.
Dr. Bradley, so that we can speak about Elementary 17, 18, 19 with Huckabee Architects.
As you mentioned earlier, if we grow 35 more students before the end of school, we will have eclipsed the 3,000 number in 12 months, which we've never done before. Even in all of our insane growth, it has ramped up over the years. So I, I think we will go over 3,000 in a 12-month time period. And because of that, we're having to accelerate projects. And as we've talked about here multiple times, part of, we've accelerated the projects because the kids are coming faster, but also because of the escalation of costs in the market. If we can get out of front of things earlier, we're trying to do everything we can to capture some of those savings to just get in line. And then also the, just the procurement of materials, getting steel, getting AC units and so forth. And so we're coming to you tonight for consideration, possible action to approve Huckabee to design Elementary 17, 18, and 19. The reason that we said it that way is in the 2019 bond, we plan to, as part of that bond, to get to Elementary number 20. As you know, the law changed after we passed the bond requiring full-day early childhood education. And so Elementary 20, if you will, is the Early Childhood Center. But we are constructing, you, you have recently approved the construction of Elementary number 16 in Liliana. We now need Elementary 17, 18, and 19 very quickly. And you know that we use a prototype for our elementaries that has achieved great cost savings to the district over time. One, because the architect charges a lower percent for our prototype. And then also just because when we go to bid these things, there, there's known cost in them. Our subcontractors that have been with the contractor a long time know kind of what this building requires. And then it's a great benefit for our students. We just experienced this last month with a lot of families from Light Farms and, and being transferred to Boyer due to rezoning and, and comforting to the kids. If you know where the library is at Light Farms, you know where the library is at Boyer. And so using that prototype has saved the, saved the district tangible, is tangible money over the years. And so because this would see us through the end of the bond and because we need Elementary 17 really quickly, but we're going to be right back talking about 18 and 19 very quickly, we're asking tonight for possible action to, to award these designs to Huckabee so that we can get busy doing that.
Great. Comments or questions for Dr. Bradley about that?
I'll just say, I agree with the, the use of the prototype because what you mentioned about families and students, primarily the students, when they move to another campus, they already know where things are. And so it's already hard enough for kids to move oftentimes because, you know, they're, they have some of their friends, but they're meeting all these new kids too and making new friendships. But, you know, when they walk into a building and things are pretty much the same except for the colors and some of the, you know, facade changes and things like that, it is helpful to them.
Good.
And the design's a winner, so.
The design's a winner.
Thank you all for that.
Absolutely. Comments, questions, others? All right, well, otherwise I will entertain a motion for item number 14B.
I'll make a motion for 14B.
Thank you, Deb, second? Thank you, Jenna, all in favor? Okay. 17, 18, 19.
Okay, so this is an exciting topic.
This one is, yes.
Especially if you're a staff member in Prosper ISD. We would like to ask for your approval for a 2% raise from the midpoint salary increase for the 22, 23 school year. And we're looking at a total expenditure based off of 2,675 employees of about 3.9 million total is what this would, would cost with those. And that would be increases for all involved. So you might be thinking, well, is this just teachers? No, pair professionals too. So we'll make those adjustments for all employees because that 2,675 is everyone involved.
Fabulous.
And the Subcommittee did a great job, Finance Subcommittee, of really kind of looking into the distance, working through all the different scenarios and the way that the bond model impacts salary increases and what that looks like as we continue to move forward. I know that Mr. Willborn and Mr. Cavender were with us and I think kind of eye-opening process to be able to see well into the future. So Dr. Penn got out his crystal ball and took us into the future to show us what this looks like financially. It was a little scary, it was a little scary for a moment, but I think we landed in a good place to bring you all a recommendation.
I would like to say that, I want to echo what Dr. Ferguson just said. And Mr. Cavender may want to share as well, but from the Finance Committee, we did have a very in-depth conversation about it. And coming out of that. And coming out of that, I do support the numbers that are in our packet. I think that it's doable for the district. I will be, I will say, I'm very excited for the staff who will benefit from this. I think that it's, it's definitely a step in the right direction.
That's fabulous.
So this is for teachers, parents, bus drivers, custodians, everyone across the board.
Our employees, yes, all the way across and 2% from the midpoint. So if there are any teachers and staff that are out there watching, give us just a hot minute to get this calculated because we don't have approval yet, so we're not doing anything in advance. So principals, I know you're in the room, so help us with the people. And just say, we will, and we will be sending out communication tomorrow to help them understand kind of when we'll have all of this out. But it will help drastically with the fight that we're in to get employees because every district is going after the same employees. And if we already have this raise in place, it helps us and makes us more competitive with our surrounding districts. And the last thing we want to do is lose a great candidate to another district that we could have had here over just really a small amount of money is what it would end up equalling. But every dollar counts when you're trying to pay your bills and feed your family.
Absolutely. Okay, that's exciting. Thank you, finance committee.
Good job, guys.
Great.
I'm excited if we approve this. Our teachers are getting a raise.
Why don't you want the, why don't we let the two?
Why don't you just sit here for a moment? And enjoy.
Absolutely.
Our people deserve it.
Yeah.
Especially after the last two years and those that are remaining on with us, that's a gift.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, finance committee, do you want to make the motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the raises as presented.
I was gonna do that.
Drew?
And I will gladly second it.
Okay.
Very good.
You'd be a third. All right, all in favor? All right, perfect. Don't get very many motions with applause, I like that.
Well, maybe we have another one coming up because here's another win for our employees. So currently, the way that our board policy, DEC local, is written is that our employees can basically hold on to 10 days, but then after the year, they've got to start burning those days or they lose them. This change in this policy would allow them to be able to carry those days over and that we would go up to 30, being able to hold them. Because what happens is, number one, it's pro-employee, which is always an awesome thing to do for our staff. But also, we want to make sure that our staff is not caught in that situation of, I need to burn days or I need to go serve kids. We want them to be like the choices to go serve kids today rather than this constraint of the days. So we want to make this adjustment with your approval so that, that we can keep them here. And it's another, it's another feather in your cap as a board, not only the raise, but then also these days are huge for our staff. And it does, it puts us in alignment with our competitors, which is another thing that we analyzed and looked at before bringing this proposal to you.
No motion?
Well, I like the idea, I just have a question. Is this, and this may be a question for Dr. Penn, Dr. Ferguson.
If I don't know the answer, it's for him.
All right.
Okay.
Does this have an impact on our financials? Do we have to, as we're increasing these, the number of days that staff have to carry over, do we have to carry that number on our financials?
Well, we are paying them every day, right?
Right.
And then if they're not here, we do have to pay a substitute. So there is an impact on the financials because somebody's got to get paid that day.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anything you want to add to that, Dr. Penn?
Yes, just, just in the same, the same, the same breath, we would be spending another expense without it. It, it does help a lot. People that have been with education with the district for a while, when they have those long-term medical pieces where they need those, need those days. And I think the 30 is not excessive where we can use it. I think the, and, and the rate, I think one of the other things that we look at is the rate is set by the board. So we have some control of what that rate is. I think where you see this become problematic is when you don't have control of that rate. I think with the way we have it structured, it's a, it's a good.
Small amount of money for the gain that it's going to give. And especially for our young parents, both our male and female teachers. What they will do is they will come to work sick and not take the day off because they know at some point in time their children are going to be sick. And what we don't want is them coming to work sick. So this is going to give them time too to take care of themselves.
Absolutely.
If they need to do that or they have a family emergency, not feeling like, I don't have days, I can't go do this.
And that'll help with maternity leave also.
Well, yes, I mean, and we have some babies.
Because they're always asking generally for extra days, so it's already built in.
So they'll have at least a starting point.
Yes.
Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
Great, other comments or questions on 14D? If not, I would like to entertain a.
Go free to applause?
Yeah, no more applause.
I'll make the motion.
Get the motion?
Yes.
All right, Drew's got the motion, all right, second. Dana, thank you, all in favor? Two motions, two applauses. Wonderful, fabulous. Let's see if we can get that on the air filters. Oh no, we're getting too fast.
Well, this is where we go downhill. So, so this is an inter-local participation agreement for TASV risk management fund. It's part of what we need to do to keep in compliance with them. Obviously, you all know that they cover us for incidentals and different property damage. If there's a flood, if there's high winds and things get blown off of buildings, right? Then we're going to TASV to help us with that financial support. So basically, they're our insurance.
Yes.
Any questions? And I know I provided the FAQ because I felt like that that gave a lot of good information within your packet about what this is and what this means.
Great, thank you for that. All right, entertaining motion on 14E.
I'll make a motion as approved.
Okay.
I second.
Thank you, Bill, thank you, Deb, all right, all in favor? Great, now air filters.
Yes, now air filters. So what we're asking for is approval, this would actually come from the federal money that we received, which is the ESER funds. So the COVID money and it's one-time money that needs to be spent within a certain amount of time. But one of the things that we want to use that for are HVAC filters. And the company that we would like to recommend and use, one of the great services that they provide, a lot of times when you place orders, they want you to store all of these things. Well, we're a little limited on space in Prosper ISD, especially when it comes to storage and trying to hold these items. And so this HVAC company we have worked with previously, so they're not a new vendor for us. But they would actually, when we need the filters, they bring them out rather than us having to store them and then potential damage or, you know, humid, humidity or water or whatever ruining them. So they will come out and bring them to us when we need our new ones to get them replaced.
If they're the ones that service the air, they do good because it is freezing in here. If they do it, they do good work.
Our kids are, it's, it's all buildings, the kids come in hoodies usually and it's 90 degrees outside. So it's, it's nice and cold.
You want to switch seats? We can do it now. My nose is like.
Just remember, this used to be the old library when this was the K-12 building, so.
That's right. All right, 14F, consideration of possible approval of HVAC filters.
I'll make the motion to approve those filters.
I'll second that one.
Thank you, Drew, thank you, Drew. All in favor? Fabulous, okay. There are applause. Yeah, very good, love that, love that, okay. Now we move into our public comment for non-agenda-related items. As I said earlier, I think we have 10. Let me read my language. All public comment at regularly scheduled board meetings should be limited to school, district, governance, and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee or the district or a specific student, I'm sorry, an employee of the district or a specific student, you're encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies FNG, DGBA, or GF local. Please note that the board cannot comment on any item that is not on the board agenda for this meeting. Excuse me. Pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy BED Local, audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of that meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter a discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board unless requested by the presiding officer. When necessary for effective meeting management or accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the board, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including establishing an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allotted to each speaker. However, no individual shall be given less than one minute to make comments. As providing office, presiding of this officer of this meeting, I have set the overall time limit for public comment for each individual to be two minutes. We're all going to be able to speak at two minutes. Finally, I think it is important to address board's expectations for decorum during public comment time. While the board certainly encourages members of our community to speak about any local, about any school governance or operations topic during public comment, and while we know that no one approaches the board unless they care deeply and passionately about the matter they bring before us, we ask that each speaker conduct him or herself in a polite and civil way while addressing the board. The board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking, and we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption to our public meeting, I'll be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Thank you in advance for observing these expectations of the Board of Trustees. We appreciate your active participation in the school district. With that said, our first speaker of the evening is Mrs. Amy Bartley.
I'll keep my two minutes. Amy Bartley, 2301, Country Brook Lane in Prosper. I'm just here tonight just to say thank you, guys. I know what you do, you know, month in and month out. It's more than just this meeting, it's hours and hours and hours of prep. I know it's a lot of thought, time that you think about our district, our kids, and our parents. And so I just want to thank you. And specifically tonight, I want to say thank you, Mr. Jim Bridges, for all your time on, on the board, these, all these years you're wrapping up your term. Janet Thompson, same thing. Thank you for all your work in the community beyond this. You guys are amazing, you've done so much in the community to serve our families. And I know our family has benefited from it. My daughter graduated from Prosper High School, went off and got a college degree and came back. So, you know, you guys have just done an amazing job building a wonderful school community and, and investing in our community. And the other thing I'd like to say is that as a member of the council member on, for the town of Prosper, we enjoy a wonderful relationship. And one of our shared goals is to keep a small-town feel in Prosper. And I think one of the ways that we do that, keep that shared value, is in how we relate to each other when we disagree. And so I'm just here to say thank you for taking the high road so much. I know it's been a difficult time the last few years, COVID, masks, books, all kinds of other controversial items. Thank you, guys, for the way that you have behaved. I am, I hope for our community that we can learn that relationships are hard work. And sometimes it's harder to have a dialogue than it is to just go out there on social media. And so I hope we'll get better at respecting one another, having a respectful dialogue, and, and working towards just that relational way to fix, fix things we don't agree about. And thank you, guys, again, for all your work. I know it's a lot of hard work and we have benefited greatly from it, and so that's all.
Thank you, Amy, thank you very much, appreciate that very much. Our next topic, I mean, next speaker rather, will be Kelsey Reed.
Hello, I didn't know I was going to be second, I thought I was going to be last, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Take a deep breath, you're going to do great.
Yeah, okay, give me a second. Okay. Hello, everyone, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of the board tonight. You may recognize me because I was standing right here back in October addressing the, sorry, the homophobia and bigotry that is allowed in the district. It's been brought to my attention that there have been 30 or so books banned from the school libraries and even pulled from teachers' own personal libraries. So of course, I look at this list and I bought like six of those books about a week or two ago. And it was more than like $100. And I've almost finished all of them and they are, of course, some of the best books I've ever read. It has become very apparent as to why these books were banned. They were real, passionate, entertaining, and human. Cut both ways by Carrie Mesrobian, had a bisexual main character who was torn between his best friend and his girlfriend and his love for them both. A graphic novel about the Stonewall riots, a large part of LGBT history, was erased from the shelves, which encourages the event to be erased from history itself. People Kill People by Ellen Hopkins touched upon gun violence, how powerful you feel when you hold a firearm, how appealing that rush is, how when there are loose gun laws and safety, a firearm can end up in the wrong hands, perhaps even a child's. Asking For It by Louis O'Neill exposed the reality of rape culture. Burned Once Again by Ellen Hopkins showed abuse and religious trauma. These are real, honest-to-God issues that I think and my fellow classmates think are essential to the youth to be educated on. Many of my fellow classmates have no idea this is going on, even though it has everything to do with them. I came here today because who else was going to? If you're going to censor real-life issues, at least get input from the people it actually affects.
Thank you, Kelsey. Appreciate you speaking with us tonight, thank you for doing that. Stephanie Razor.
Hello, everyone. I was here last month and then the tornado drills, sirens went off. And so I went home because I'm not a native Texan and that scares the heck out of me. So I don't want to rehash the ugliness of last month. We all know what happened, we all know about the five innocents and plenty of us have seen it on TikTok, which I really wasn't real pleased about because those are personal kind of things and we don't want our school splashed on the internet like that. However, those kind of things happen with growth. And we have a lot of growth going on right now. And the buildings are great and we all love them and they look good and we like our kids to be in beautiful new buildings. But we have to address the cultural side of growth. And I think that we're a little lacking there. And I think we all have a different idea of what addressing that looks like. But I also think it's a great opportunity for the community to come together and talk about that because we are going to get bigger and we're going to have bigger school issues. And while we want to feel like that small-town community, and I think in a lot of ways we do, if anybody was at the 380 rally, we certainly felt like a small town that day, we're not anymore. And so we don't all know each other and we don't all go to the same church. Some of us don't go to church at all. And so we don't get to talk to each other at the Kroger like you once did. So we are going to have to look at the way that we handle these situations a little bit differently. And I really do appreciate you, Dr. Ferguson, that you got out ahead of it and that Dr. Burdette sent out that email and let parents know what was going on. Because when you're hearing it from your child, you take it with a grain of salt because they're children. But I will also say, I was really shocked when I did talk to my son, who's a sophomore at Prosper High, and some of the reasons that him and his friend peer group thought caused those fights. I'm biracial, my children are biracial. My children don't look at, like me, people that look, let me see that I'm brown. People that look at my children don't, they look white. And so my son has heard a lot of racist things.
Word, Tom. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, I appreciate you coming up here, thank you very much. Holly Draper.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Holly Draper. I'm an attorney and a parent in Prosper ISD. Last week, I reviewed almost 300 pages of documents related to the PAC's request to remove 82 books from our library shelves and the district's response to that request. What is abundantly clear from the records is that Prosper ISD administration has bowed down to political pressure from the PAC and has chosen to blatantly disregard board policies and the law. I'm here today to ask the board to hold the district administration accountable. The records show that a small group of administrators formed a committee that supposedly reviewed all 82 books within a matter of days and then proceeded to pull over a quarter of those books from school shelves. I have personally read 10 and a half of those, the books on the PAC list, and it took me a lot longer than a few days. There is no possible way four people read all those books in that amount of time. The records make it clear that this committee did not complete an independent, comprehensive review of the books on the list and instead pulled books purely for political reasons. This is a clear violation of the First Amendment rights of the students in Prosper ISD. I have read the United States Supreme Court's opinion of Board of Education versus PICO. The facts of that case mirror what has happened in Prosper ISD almost exactly. And the United States Supreme Court found the district's actions to be unconstitutional. In my opinion, no reasonable person, much less an attorney, could read this case any other way. The attorney who signed off on the procedures central administration followed to pull books in this case must be held accountable. In PICO, the Supreme Court held that a school district cannot remove books because they do not like the content or for political reasons. The court expressly rejected the district's argument that they should be allowed to unfetter discretion to quote, "transmit community values" in the schools. The records I received from PISD show that the central administrators made this decision because of the quote, "conservative values" of our district.
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Oh. Thank you, Ms. Draper. I appreciate you bringing your comments to us. Thank you very much. Christina Stevenson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Christina Stevenson, and I'm a Prosper resident and a parent to a six- and thirteen-year-old. Several books were labeled "pervasively vulgar" and removed from Prosper ISD libraries and classroom shelves without a proper reconsideration process. The Merriam-Webster definition for pervasive means existing in or spreading through every part of something. Vulgar means offensive in language, or lewdly, or profanely indecent. Given the definition of pervasive, it cannot be determined that a book is pervasively vulgar without reading the entire book. While the documents received stated that all eighty-two books were judged in their entirety, it also says they were fully read in three to four days. As an avid reader, I question how one could read eighty-two books fully in three to four days. The documents also state this is not the typical way that we, quote, "go about things," end quote. This emphasizes that the established district process was not followed. As an example, the book The Music of What Happens was removed. A community member stated, "Is there some bad language in this book?" Yes. "Is there some sexual content in this book?" Yes. But is it absolutely pervasively vulgar? Not. It is not, because that needs to be a requirement throughout the book, and it was not. It is crucial that the reconsideration committee is formed for each individual book after a form is submitted. This will ensure that multiple people read the same book and then can have an informed discussion about whether or not the book is pervasively vulgar, and it's not based on just one opinion. Prosper ISD administration must be held accountable by the school board for not following the district's process and making hurried decisions that are now final. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Appreciate you coming up here. Janie Oyakawa. I hope I got that right. Sorry if I didn't.
You did great.
Thank you.
Janie Oyakawa. I am a Prosper resident, and I've spoke before the board before. I'm a mother of six and also seven this year, because we are one of the families blessed to have a foreign exchange student, and we've really appreciated the district affording us that opportunity. It's been really great for our family. I'm a daughter of a teacher. She was an amazing teacher, my mom, and, sorry, she didn't want me to be a teacher. She said, "No, no, 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 no. I want you to be in a profession where you will be treated like a professional at all times," and I don't always feel like that happens in education. She goes, "I have a master's degree, and I'm regularly regimented on every single thing that I do. So you do a profession where you will be treated like the professional that you are." I've always been pretty proud of Prosper, that I feel like the teachers here do work under the, their own guidance and their own professional background in education. I've been really impressed with how many women we have in positions of authority. I'm so proud of Dr. Holly Ferguson and the example she has to my daughters. But what's going on with this book issue is very upsetting to me, because I feel like we have a lot of librarians and middle school and high school educators who have been subverted by this process. And things have happened, and I don't know exactly all of it. I know these documents have come out and were being reviewed, but things have happened that do not follow policy, are unconstitutional, and are ignoring our students' best interest. We have people in our community that are trying to erase the existence of LGBTQ issues by taking those issues out of the school library as some sort of easy political target, and that is not fair to the educators or to the students, and this needs to be rectified. And the people that have made these decisions against the policy need to be held accountable.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Katie Nguyen. Nguyen, Nguyen, dang it.
Remember how you do that?
I know. That's, of course.
We've been over this.
I'm sorry. Apologize.
I'm going to try to shorten this, since others have said eloquently also what I'm saying. I am part of the group that decided to read through the eighty-two books that were on the proposed book ban list, so we could decide for ourselves whether or not the books should be pulled. I have personally read six of the books on the list. One of those books, What We Saw, was on the list, pulled from shelves by the district. I reviewed the Prosper ISD records related to the book ban that were sent to Holly Draper. I firmly believe that if the board's policies were followed and a reconsideration committee had been reconvened for what we saw, it would still be available to our students. The district records reflect that the reason for banning this book is graphic to pictures of rape, explicit sex acts. Nothing in the records show the bigger picture of what this book is actually about. This book is well-done and thought-provoking, based on the actual events of the Steubenville, Ohio rape case. This book goes over the issues of consent, sports culture, standing up for truth, even at risk of social and emotional cost, and the importance of speaking out if you see something. So here I am. Both in my discussion with district officials and in revealing these records, it is clear that the district removed books that do not meet the definition of pervasively vulgar. While there are certainly sentences or even paragraphs in the books, when taken alone, qualify as vulgar, it would offend some people. The decision to remove a book must turn on the book as a whole, not individual portions of the book. I am asking that the school board hold our district administration accountable for its failure to follow board policies and its failure to follow the law. I, too, was on the superintendent's parent advisory council this year. I heard Dr. Ferguson tell the roomful of parents that board procedures would be followed and books would simply not be removed, but they were. That did happen, and I ask that you hold them accountable.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Kyle Oyakawa.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. Good evening.
My name is Kyle. I'm, oh, Janey's my husband, so I also have six plus one students in the district, or previously in the district. I also want to speak about the book ban and that the group that managed to scream loud enough to get administrators, some administrators, to subvert the process and have books removed, under the pretense that they had explicit content, pervasive explicit content. Looking at the list on what they was removed and what they want to have removed, it's obvious that a lot of these books are on that list, not because of any explicit content, but simply because they reference LGBTQ characters, or the mere fact that, that there are LGBTQ youths, even students. I think it's incredibly important that our youth, really everyone, but especially our youth, have representation, that they see themselves represented in media, in literature, in leadership. Studies have shown that this leads to greater happiness and also a decrease in the rate of suicide, seeing yourself represented and accepted in various formats. I think that our students deserve this representation. I think our students deserve to be exposed to diversity, and I think our students deserve to be educated and to grow up in a community where they don't see adults and parents and others try to erase their existence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing with us tonight. Now, this one, I can't blame on my inability to pronounce it, the handwriting. Eileen?
Sorry, I'm bad.
Okay. Kurt, Kurt, is that Kurtain?
Kurtain, yes.
Kurtain.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. A documents request was made by a member of the community, and it appears to indicate that the policies and procedures outlined by the ISD for reconsidering specific library books were not followed. A justification often cited in these ISD documents is that the books were removed because of the, quote-unquote, "conservative values" of the Prosper ISD community, not the standards established in the courts of law or district policies, or with representation from a cross-section of the entire community. As a member of the Prosper community, I am requesting that these books be reviewed again, following the policies and procedures of the ISD. In addition, I am requesting the school board adopt policies that, at a minimum, include requiring transparency in the review process, requiring clear guidance and baseline training on intellectual freedom, the Board of Ed versus PICO, other important case law, and other meaningful information or definitions, such as the definition of pervasive vulgarity, and what makes something age-appropriate, to help the committee members understand the difference between a subjective decision and an objective one. I'm also requesting that you adopt policies that require reviewers to cite specific examples and detail their rationale in writing for their decisions to remove or keep a book. For example, if it is deemed pervasively vulgar, what is the objective evidence presented in the book that makes it pervasively vulgar? Also, to develop procedures for ensuring diversity and representation on the review committees, particularly from the LGBTQIA community and student community, as these are the groups that seem to be most affected by this particular book list. And for those employees that do not follow official policies, that you hold them accountable. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kurtain. I appreciate you coming up here. Our last speaker will be Mrs. Brkowsky.
Good evening, and thank you. First, I want to give a shout-out to those great teachers who do deserve that raise. My kids have definitely had the benefit of some of those amazing teachers who come in early every morning, and they are there, and they're present to my kids, and they're teaching them math over again, because they probably weren't paying attention in class. So, anyway, I thank the teachers of this district who give of themselves like that, and, and thank you for giving them a raise. I'm here to address the book issue, and I'm here to affirm the board and the administration and the decisions that you have made. I appreciate your taking thoughtful consideration of what has been sent before you. I come here speaking to you today as a parent of kids in this district, and I speak on my own behalf and not on behalf of any organization which I am associated with. I would like to share with you directly some content from one of these books. It might set the record straight in terms of what the content of these books is really all about. This was not on the original eighty-two list. It has been sent in for reconsideration, and I hope that it will be reconsidered and removed soon. This book contains pictures and words. I will just read some pages. I don't have a lot of time. Even when you, and I apologize in advance if this is sensitive to you, please leave the room. This is going, not going to be comfortable. "Even when you undress her, you are searching for me, and I'm sorry that I taste so good. When you two, when the two of you make love, it is still my name that rolls off your tongue accidentally. You must have known you were wrong when your fingers were dipped inside me, searching for honey that would not come for you, in an image of hands dripping with a certain substance. You move my hand between my legs and whisper, 'Make those pretty little fingers dance for me.' Solo performance. I'm learning to love him by loving myself. You plow into me with two fingers, and I am mostly shocked. It feels like rubber against an open wound. I do not like it. You begin pushing faster and faster. I feel nothing. This is serial rape, and this is not something we should normalize. This has nothing to do with LGBTQ identity, and I appreciate what you've done for the district."
Thank you, Ms. Brkowsky. I appreciate your comments. Thank you for coming tonight, letting us, sharing with us. Okay, that is the end of public comment. We're now moving into executive session. I need a motion to move into executive session?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Bill. Second. Thank you, Deb. All in favor? We will go into our executive session stuff. We will come back into public session with any decisions that need to be made. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome everybody. It is 10:04. We are back in session from executive session. We have three pieces of business that we need to conduct. We have conditional hires that we need to approve. We have resignations we need to approve. And we have new hires we need to approve.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll take... Can we do all motion? Let's do all those motions together.
I think we have to do them individually.
Do we have to do them separately?
I think we do.
Yes.
That's probably cleaner.
Cleaner, but it takes more time. But we'd be done by now if I'd have started that way. Okay, a motion on conditional hires.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Beavers?
I'll second.
Second, Drew Wilborn. All in favor? We have a motion on resignations.
I make a motion on the resignations as presented.
Second, Jana. All in favor? All in favor. And the last is the new hires.
I'll make a motion on the new hires.
Kelly, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dino. All in favor? Motion to end the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Bill, second?
I'll second.
Second, Jana. All in favor? Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.